The witching hour coming, in case there are some people who are eager, eager to meet Mr. Reed, who will be our first interviewee. If you'd like to come up to the table, we'll be ready to start in a moment. As you know, Jessica is leaving us for, to work at the state level, and I can't, while we'll miss her, I am happy for her and that her career is taking a different turn, which seems to please her a great deal. And that being said, we are looking for an interim. That would be some individual that would work in her stead until we get together to hire a full-time permanent position, which will probably not be until after the town meeting and so forth, because we really need to get through that before we get involved in finalizing the position going forward. So at any rate, tonight we have with us Mr. Robert Reed. He comes from us with a number of years of experience, not only as being a town administrator, but also in being an interim. After retiring from a full-time job, he does this on the side, you know, to help out towns like Barry in Sturbridge and Rutland. He has been in all of those towns in Princeton, Southbridge. So it's not only us who have to do these transitional things. So without further ado, Mr. Reed, why don't you just introduce yourself to the individuals who are here? Tell us a little bit about yourself, and then we will entertain some questions.
I've never seen so many people show up to interview an interim.
Well, it's not really that. They're here for a special town meeting warrant where they're looking to put some language in the warrant. And so we gave them an opportunity to escape and go out and ride around, but if they would like to stay here, I'm happy to have them.
Well, I guess I'll go back to when I first started doing interim work. I had retired from the town of Lester in September, and about two months later, it was dark at 4:30, and the clocks had changed, and no more outdoor activities, no more golf, no more anything. And I don't think that I really appreciated how long winters were while I was working, because you're busy. And out of the blue, I got a call from the gentleman who was leaving Southbridge. He'd got my name from a colleague while working, just retired, maybe he'd be interested in the interim position. And I went to meet with him in his office, and he was describing to me all different responsibilities and the projects that were going on. And I just felt energized, and I guess I've felt that way ever since. I think when you're retired, you need to stay connected. You need to stay active, not just physically, but mentally. And this is sort of what I do. I found the interim jobs very rewarding. It's been great doing the work, meeting the people, meeting a lot of people that you want to stay in touch with even after you leave the town. So it's been very rewarding in a number of ways, so I'm interested in the town of Barry, and hopefully I'll be lucky enough to get the position.
It looks, it looks as if your last acting town administrator job was in Sturbridge, which ended in May of '22.
Just last May.
Okay, so you're certainly well-versed in what it is to be a town administrator. So you want to go ahead, John, and ask a question or two?
Sure. Can you tell us why you're interested in becoming the town administrator? And what about Barry makes it a community you want to work in? What qualities do you have that would make you the ideal candidate for the position?
Well, I'm not interested in the full-time position.
We know.
Yeah, I saw that in your ad, and actually, it's probably been official. I'm sure Greg won't be either. Greg and I go back 100 years.
This is Greg, our Greg?
No, Greg Balconas.
Oh, okay. I thought you meant Greg O'Sullivan, who were one of our additional members.
No, I saw in your interview and Greg after me, and Greg and I go way back. I doubt that he'd be interested in the full-time position either, which is probably beneficial for applicants.
Yes, I agree.
I'm interested in Barry because, you know, I've worked out in this area before. I'm originally from Worcester. I've worked in Princeton. I've worked in Rutland. I think also, I think I can help the town in a couple of ways. Typically, in my contracts with towns where I've been interim, I've worked physically three days a week in the town hall. I think that since you're open four days a week, I say, I might be able to do it. And so much now is done remotely. Perhaps it's being here physically two days a week, which would help save the town some money, frankly. And also help you expedite the recruitment process, which we can get into. But I think for a lot of reasons, I don't think that it needs to take as long as it often takes in some communities where the recruitment process will last five or six months. I think that there are ways to expedite it, so you don't need to go through the extra time and expense.
Okay. I guess describing, I mean, looking at your resume, the next question seems a little superfluous in that I say, "Do you know what a town administrator does?" I know you know what a town administrator does.
Depends on who you ask.
Okay. If that's the case, then maybe we need you to answer that question. I would like you to describe what you believe your function would be as a transitional employee, trying to bridge this person leaving and a new person coming in. Obviously, we're in the midst of what I think is a very busy time, due to the factors. We're rolling into the town meeting. We're trying to, you know, get budget stuff. We're trying to see what's going to happen at the legislature as far as, you know, unrestricted, you know, town, town aid, what was looking at, or local aid, we're looking at what's going to happen with that regional school district. It's held harmless, and it's getting zero from the state, and are going to be obviously looking at a budget where they're going to be, you know, having to put pressure on the town. So I guess I say to you, what would you say your role is, as you say, you come in, she's leaving, you know, you've got to carry us through that town meeting? How would you organize that?
Well, I think as far as the primary responsibilities go, I mean, it would be meeting with the selectmen, meeting with department heads, finding out what your priorities are. But the fundamental responsibility, I think, of an interim is just to make sure that no deadlines are missed. Any responsibilities, whether it's, you know, deadlines, collective bargaining agreements, grants, what have you, that everything goes smoothly, that, you know, nothing happens, no deadlines are missed, and everything, the town continues as smoothly as possible. As far as my approach to the job, I think if you were to talk to selectmen in towns that I've worked in, I mean, what I tell them is that I'm not here to have the town change in my image. I take a very low-key approach. I'll take my guidance from the selectmen and follow it. You know, I'm not going to be leading any charges or anything like that. I think you want things to go as smoothly as possible. As far as this time of year and being very busy, well, this is often the time of year that I've been working to prepare towns for town meeting. I was in Sturbridge until the end of May, helping them get ready for town meeting. But one thing I do try to do is approach the job as if I were the full-time administrator and take on all the responsibilities that a full-time administrator would take on. And in that regard, try to leave as little as possible for the next person, the full-time administrator, try and get as much done as possible as I can. And I think if you were to talk to selectmen and department heads that I've worked with before, they would hear that out.
Okay. John here?
Yep. So one of the things we have coming, we have multiple contracts going on with unions right now. That's one of our big topics. If you could just share some of your experience in contract negotiations, and then also a little in human resource administration and municipal budget development.
What, how many are open now? Do they all expire at the end of June?
No, we have DPW that does, and we have the police, the contract, and we think we're close with the police at this point in time. We'll probably get that wrapped up within the next week. I could be fantasizing. But DPW, I would suspect, would run on into, if you're the successful candidate, your tenure.
Yeah. Well, I don't know what level of detail you want me to get into. I mean, in every town that I've been in, I've got the person, the point person for collective bargaining.
Okay.
You know, I think many communities handle it differently. I know in some communities, the town administrator doesn't handle collective bargaining at all, but leaves it up to town council, labor council, to handle it.
We have a labor council, and there's one select board member who acts as a representative and also the town administrator.
Do you have KP now for?
We do for general, but we have a different labor council, somebody we've
Dupree.
Dupree that we've worked with out of the western part of the state.
All right, yeah, I don't think we've worked with that. But I'm, I mean, I think I'm pretty well-versed in it. I've been the point person at every town that I've been in. Usually, there's some difficulties. I mean, there was one in Sturbridge. There was a particularly thorny issue with a contract that was going on, but that's par for the course.
Yeah, I'm afraid you're right. It says here, what did your past jobs, I mean, you've done those past jobs. Can you give some examples of coming in and seeing that there are some grievous things, and you say, "Hey"? Are you honest? Or do you just say, "Well, I'm just not going to say anything, because this is kind of what they've been doing, and they think they're doing it right"? Would you say to us, okay, because it's sticky, you sit across the table from us and say, "Hey, guys, I wouldn't be doing X and Y. I think that's not the right way to go, and this is my reasoning"? Or would you just let us go off into the sunset?
You know, that's a very good question, because that's been the difference between the interim jobs and when I was doing this full-time. I've been surprised, Jessica may get a kick out of this, I've been surprised how often, when I was leaving an interim position, where the selectmen would say, "We thank you for your honesty."
Okay.
Whereas when I was working full-time in this position, that could be the thing that would get you in trouble the fastest. You know?
Yeah.
I mean, sometimes being honest with people is, you know, not the, not the way to go. Sometimes with selectmen, if you're honest with them, they might feel that you're working against them. You try to explain, "Well, you know, I've been doing this for a while, and I can give you the six reasons why what you're suggesting is not a good idea, and frankly, it's not about you, it's what's in the best interest of the town." But I mean, as far as interim goes, I mean, there's no severance, there's no benefits that I'm going to have in my contract if you don't like me, and
Well, I'm not saying I don't, I'm not saying I don't want to like you, I'm just want
No, no, I'm saying
I just need, I just need the idea that the person with whom we're working interim is ultimately honest with us and saying, "You know, I've got X number of years of experience with this. I think maybe you should look at this." Giving us good insight, rather than saying, "Well, whatever they want to do, I'll just kind of..."
I think that's the benefit of having someone who's been doing it for a while and been doing it in a number of different communities, where you've seen different ways to do things. And I think that's part of my job, is to suggest to you ways that things could change. What I was getting at earlier, when I said, "If you don't like me," I mean, my point was I have nothing to lose by being honest.
Well, see, I have, I have something to lose if you're not honest.
Exactly.
That's what I just want to make clear.
Right. And I think that you would want to benefit from the experience of whoever comes in as the interim, you know?
Absolutely.
And I think you'll find out with your next interview as well. I mean, Greg and I go back a long way, like I said. I think also, there's an opportunity, I mean, in that vein with an interim, as far as dealing with thorny issues. As I mentioned earlier, I'm not going to try and change the town, I'm not going to be leading any charges. However, I think that you can take advantage of an interim in the same way that you can take advantage of, say, a consultant. This is somebody who's going to be leading town, someone who's going to be here for just a short period. If you have a particularly thorny issue, that's something that the interim can at least start to break the ice on and begin to address. And so you can look at the interim position two different ways, whether you want the former or the latter, but, you know, I can, I can do it either way, but I'll take my cue from the selectman.
Okay. John?
This is a fun one. I honestly really like this one. Just throughout your employment history, can you just give us an example of some time you really had to think outside the box and problem-solve, come up with some new way to resolve a situation?
There have been many. Well, I think the first thing that comes to mind is when I was in Lester, we did a lot of regional work. We had a, took a full-time planner position, and because of budget constraints, made it a shared planner with Spencer. I worked with Spencer in Charlton quite a bit, and there was a regional grant application that came out. This was several years ago, and I think it was popular with communities, as it usually is, because of funding dried up. And, you know, if you, if you need the money, that's what, that's what inspires towns to go in that direction. But we wrote a grant for a regional approach to the MS4 permits, stormwater management.
Yeah.
And we started, we were successful, we had the grant funded, and we started a regional approach and a regional consortium to deal with the MS4 permit. Well, that started, I mean, if you look at the DEP website now, they're all over. So this was an idea that we started with regionalization. I mean, I can think of plenty of others, and I think that would be, to get to your earlier question, part of my responsibility here is to show you different ways to do things, suggest different ways to do things.
Right. Okay. John? Nothing? We have, the town is a member of, this is kind of right in your wheelhouse then, the town of Barry is a member of and hosts of a number of intermunicipal agreements. Describe your experience in managing interdisciplinary, not interdisciplinary, I'm back in my old world, intermunicipal agreements. And, you know, what ones have you managed successfully? Have you just been a partner in them? Have you provided leadership in, you know, actually tooling the contract between and among communities?
I think the intermunicipal agreements are popular among the small communities, where you can regionalize services. I've written a grant in, actually, the first town where I was administrator for a shared planner, which we did with other communities when I was in Sutton, and looked at changing the zoning along 146. There's a regional stormwater management, off the top of my head, but I know there have been several, some that, you know, I was responsible in, whatever community I was in was the lead community, or some where we were just participants. Probably, I mean, getting back to money, probably the thorniest issue is who's going to pay what for what services. But a lot of times, that's, that can be easy to work out, but I think the regional approach on so many things really is the way to go in small communities, you know? And you're trying to look at as many different things that you can find that are shared, you know, assessor services and so forth, building department, that you can share with communities and go in that direction.
John, you have some other question?
Could you just describe your experience with Chapter 30B and ensuring municipal compliance?
The procurement?
Yeah.
I've been the procurement officer in every town that I've been in. Well, I'll be upfront with you, I'm not certified.
Okay, you're not?
But I don't see that that's, I mean, I remember when 30B first came out, and I was in the town of Westport, and we went to a half-day seminar at UMass Dartmouth, which I think is all that 30B really needs, frankly.
Well, that's not what they think.
I know.
It's a long, arduous process to get certified procurement.
I'll just say honestly how I feel. I mean, this is a classic case of, you know, the bureaucracy just trying to justify its existence. I think it's silly to turn that into a three-day certification process. I don't think 30B is that complicated. I think it's all pretty straightforward. There's a manual, a lot about it that you can, you can, I mean, I've just done everything under 30B, whether it's bids or proposals or what have you, you know, and written them up and put them out there for just all kinds of things. But I just don't see 30B, I don't know whether, how strongly you feel that certification is a requirement.
Well, I don't feel as strongly as the state feels. But I mean, there are grants that you can't, you know, you have to have the, what is it, MCPPO certification in order to sign as the procurement officer. And as a community, we have to have a designated community office, compliance officer here. So it's not like, I kind of agree with you, you know, philosophically, but, you know, as it comes to nuts and bolts, there is an expectation that somebody is appropriately certified in each and every town to operate as the procurement officer. Am I correct?
Yeah.
I mean, certainly that way in a school district.
I didn't know that, okay, well, I wasn't aware of that, that you actually had to have a certified person to be eligible for certain grants. But, I mean, I don't know how many you'll be applying for in the short time
Oh, yeah. Well, no, I agree, but I
That's what I was going to say. I'm like, I don't think we'll run into that riddle, but.
So, okay. Well, we've asked those kinds of questions here, and John, any other questions for you?
No, just if there's any questions you have for us, or anything you want to say that would help.
I have just a couple of questions, one other question. You know, you talked about your physical presence in the office. So you're thinking two or three days a week?
I think that's open for discussion.
Okay.
I'm flexible. I think a lot of it is, can be done remotely. But I'll say, I mean, in the towns that I've worked in, and all the towns where I've been interim, the agreement was that I would be in the town hall three days a week.
Okay.
That didn't mean that I was only working three days a week.
Right, right.
I mean, I, as I mentioned to you earlier, I approached the job as if I'm the full-time person. I've spent weekends working for the town. You'll have my cell, I'll be available. I remember I was in the town of Hope Dale when COVID hit.
Yeah.
You might remember, everything got turned upside down.
I do remember.
I must have been putting in, I don't know how many hours a week, but you do what you have to do. And the fact that I may be here two days a week physically doesn't mean that that's all I'll be doing. You do what you have to do. And I think, again, getting back to earlier communities, if you talk to them about my approach to the position, I would think, I would hope that they would bear that out. And if it requires additional hours, you get close to town meeting, you simply do what you have to do to get the job done.
Okay. Now, do you generally operate on a 1099, or do you generally become an employee of our community?
Well, I'm, I'm a contract, I have a contract with the town, but I've always gotten W2s.
Yeah, well, you'll get a W2, so you don't get a 1099? You, you have us remove taxes from your
Yeah.
Okay. Just a question we have. Anything else, John?
No, I'm good.
Anything else that you would have for us? We're going to be making a very, you know, quick decision for obvious reasons. Jessica's last week is next week.
Yeah.
And we'd be looking for, what would be a potential start date for you?
I can start anytime.
Okay. So you're flexible with that, and could maybe work a little bit of an overlap with her, just to get the lay of the land?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
The only question I had, and I saw that, you know, the selectmen is on your 6:30 agenda with the selection, and also some discussion about the special, and I think with posting requirements and so forth, the interim may very well be here for the special. I was just
I would think you would be.
This isn't the most common time of year to have a special town meeting.
Well, I can give you the history on that sometime.
All right, okay.
We have a 250th anniversary that's coming up in 2024, and we need to put together some upfront money for the, that committee in order to say, "Oh, yes, we get this band. Oh, yes, we get this, you know, the Hallamore, you know, horses, or we get the Budweiser group." We have to begin to put money into that process. And so that's one of the things that we're going to be dealing with at that special. It shouldn't be a long special. It should be pretty, pretty, pretty quick. But we do have, we have a debt exclusion on our ballot for
I saw that.
Yeah. So that, of course, is, you know, we all live in hope, but we don't know what that hope will do for us, so
You know, you have quite a few items on that, but, I mean, debt exclusions are the way to go with capital.
Well, yeah, but if, this town has not been historically interested in using that tool, so this will be, this is, this is an old debt that we're trying to get off the books.
Yeah.
So we're hopeful that people will be amenable to that, because freeing up money in the levy is really necessary for us to get through this, you know, just to pay our electric bill.
According to the DOR website, and I don't know how up to date they are, but it didn't look like Barry had had a debt exclusion for about 10 years.
Yeah. We had the common one was the last
The common one was in 2016 or 18, somewhere in there.
I really don't remember. I know that they've got one on the school roof.
The school roof was, yeah.
Yeah. But no, they haven't, they haven't, and so they don't have a lot of experience with it, and so obviously, there's some limitations on what we can do as far as trying to campaign for it, so we're cautious about that.
So some of the items on the debt exclusion are for the remainder of existing debt?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, everything out.
All of the margin.
Yeah, it's all existing.
Oh, I thought some of it, I mean, I thought I saw a fire truck, you just approved a fire truck.
Well, yeah, but that's
That's a different fire truck.
This is a
This is a whole conversation.
Oh, okay, okay.
This is a whole conversation, that if you're fortunate enough to be the candidate, we'll talk a lot about it.
See, this is why, you know, sometimes candidates will spend a lot of time going online and DOR website and so forth, and this is a perfect example why that's not fruitful. You can learn in talking to Jessica or your accountant more about town finance in five minutes than in two hours.
Exactly. Right. Okay. Well, thank you so much, Mr. Reed, for coming in and talking with us, and we will be back in touch one way or the other, probably within 24 hours.
Mm-hmm.
It was very nice to meet you.
Very nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. And if Greg's out there, you can welcome him in when he's available.
Greg. Yeah, we kind of were on that off-road early.
Probably easier than getting the new superintendent.
Probably.
You think so?
Don't you think? They haven't even, I don't think they've even, I don't know if they're even down the road with posting it yet.
I don't think they have a question.
It's a long, it's a big, it's a big deal.
I have a question. Is this person just filling in till the special town, or till the town meeting? Is that what you mean, or are they, like, permanent?
No, no, they, well, see, it takes a while to actually go out and find someone who wants the job permanent. So when someone's leaving sort of midstream, you get what they call an interim. And there's people around, obviously, who this is what they do. And so we're very fortunate to have two or three applicants who are very, you know, very experienced, because otherwise, it's a, it's a scary ride, so
It's a lot to leave in.
I'm sorry?
It's a lot to leave in.
Yeah, well, yeah. I mean, it's, and, and you know, it's not like we have this huge cadre of people that could just be the interim.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Greg, how are you?
Greg, how are you?
Hi, Maury Marshall.
Hi, Maury.
Hi, John Dixon.
Hi, John, nice to meet you. Hello, Greg, how are you? Good to meet you.
Okay, Greg, thanks for driving all the way out here.
Yeah, it was a nice, fun drive.
It was it? Okay.
It was, so.
A little bit, what?
Oh, my God.
It's a little bit more if you keep going north.
Yeah.
Yeah. But anyway, you probably are very much aware of our situation. I would do it just for the record to indicate that our town, current town administrator is leaving to take a position at the state level, and we are, you know, ultimately going to hire, obviously, a town administrator, but cannot do that quickly, and we cannot go without someone with Jessica's skillset, your skillset, as we move through the very, very busy part of our, you know, fiscal season. You know? I know, I'm not telling you anything you don't know. In fact, you know it better than I do.
No, but I like to hear it.
Okay. So what we're looking for is someone who has the ability to walk into a situation like the town of Barry, and to provide the Board of Selectmen and our Budget and Finance Committee with sage advice as to what to do when and how to do it in the best possible way. We will have questions and concerns, and we've got a debt exclusion on our ballot for town election that we hope is just clearing up some old debt. that we hope is just clearing up some old debt. Yes, we're hopeful, but it's really, really hard because the, the campaign restrictions that are on us to go to beat the drum, you know, make it-
Well, you know, well.
Yeah, make it difficult for us to be able to explain to people why, why we think this is so important. So that being said, I guess we say, why, town of Barry, why were you interested in us? And when could you start if you're the successful candidate? And then we have some other kind of questions for you.
So in terms of, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here.
Oh, we're happy to have you.
Lovely town. I started my career not too far away, 36 years ago, actually 40 years ago now, Orange Mass.
Oh, my gosh, okay.
So I like to say it's kind of nice to, different county, different type of community, no doubt. But it's kind of nice to go back to the type of town that you started in.
Mm-hmm.
My interest is always small town, small town government, roll up your sleeves and get the job done. That's what interested me in terms of coming to your community. The opportunity to put things in good condition for the next person who's going to be here. Whether it's fixing issues or taking on new initiatives, I'm sure your town administrator is capable on those. Probably not too many things that need to be fixed, but the budget needs to be done, needs to be brought to completion. Town meeting is coming up, work needs to be done, motions need to be done. There's always, I'm not sure if there's any union issues, any union contracts need to be settled.
We have to settle at least one, maybe one and a half.
So, so contracts, dealing with hiring and human resources decisions, and just making sure that things happen in a timely manner and that the calendar that we all follow and what the government is adhered to in time so that we can have a successful town meeting in the spring.
Right.
And then hand, hand the reins off to the next individual. I might note in my cover letter, I'm not a candidate for the permanent position.
Right, right.
So I feel as though, you know, kind of come in and, and look at things from an unbiased point of view. Offer my advice to the board where is necessary. I've done it before in other communities. I think you may have seen from my resume. I was in, most recently in Webster.
Yeah.
Quite a bit bigger town than this, different demographics and kind of a different feel and look to it. And then before that, I was in the town of Blackstone, about, about double the size of this, maybe a little less, but a fairly small geographic area. I was successful in both of those communities, working as the interim. So I, I really know what needs to be done and, and what the critical issues are when you work as a part-time interim town administrator.
When you say part-time?
Yeah.
What, what's your idea of the number of days a week that you would work and assess?
Three, three, sometimes more, sometimes less.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think in the other communities, I worked about 25 hours a week.
Okay.
We're in the budget season, so this is necessary that one needs to attend finance committee meetings, selectmen's meetings, capital planning and such. So realize that those are the obligations that come with the job and are prepared to embrace those if I'm offered the position.
Embrace those. I think, I would say that is really high talk.
It is high talk.
John, you have some interim questions or just want to write to the?
Yeah, you just, especially where we do have contract negotiations ongoing with a couple of unions right now. Could you describe your experience and your style in contract negotiations? And then also with regard to human resource administration and municipal budget development?
So the issue of collective bargaining for my resume, that was kind of one of the major duties that I had in my last two jobs. More in, in Blackstone than in Webster. At Blackstone, I inherited five municipal labor contracts. And none of them had been negotiated except for a cost of living increase in six years. So try as I may to push across the table a proposal to re-op it just based on a cost of living increase that was rejected ultimately by the unions. And we had to sit down, we being me, had to sit down and negotiate these agreements. And I'm proud to say, they were negotiated fairly and in the best interests of both parties. My style in collective bargaining is a pretty friendly guy. I'm pretty open. I don't hide anything. Firm but fair, so I know what the town needs and wants are. You can either tell me what those are, which I hope you would do, or intuitively, I can kind of figure out some things that may need to be addressed as part of the negotiation process. But I feel like I did a pretty good job in, in Blackstone. It was, it was me. There was no human resources director, that was the town administrator. And the department heads, for whatever screwy reason, they had conflicts. One of them had a daughter that worked in the department and the other one had a son that worked in the department.
Small towns.
So me, so I would be a caucus of one. But, but I, I don't want to tip too much in terms of how my strategy was to get those contracts settled. I had some things that I did that I think worked out pretty well. If you were to contact any of those towns, I'll speak to the union officials in any of those towns. I'm sure they could speak and say that I think I did a pretty good job. In terms of my approach toward the budget, conservative, conservative, conservative. You have to start small, and I'm sure the revenue estimates have already been done. So look at the revenue estimates and then start off with, I'm sure, again, there's guidelines that have been given to the municipal departments to stay within a certain constraint. You want to be able to, to stay within those. It's much easier to build the budget than it is to cut the budget. So that the approach is, is pretty sound in terms of one, two. Schools are a big portion of what you do. You have original school. You want to reach out to the, to the officials in the original school district and make sure that we're all on the same page and that someone's not off in the right field far away. We did that when I was in Blackstone, had original school, and reached out to the superintendent of schools. I feel like we've got a good collaborative relationship. We work well. Schools sometimes don't know what the town has available, and the town sometimes doesn't know what the schools' needs are. So you've got to kind of marry those two things together. And in terms of my, there was another question you had in there too, and I apologize.
Oh, the human resources. You kind of touched on that as well.
Yeah, so I, I think with human resources, you have to, I mean, my preference would be to not make permanent hiring decisions. We have a new person that's coming in. So to the extent I can kind of keep things running and give whoever the new incoming town administrator the ability to select people on his or her team that they, they can work with versus who I can work with, I can work with anybody. But I'm only here for three or four months. I'm not here for the next 10 years. And you want to be able to have someone, you want to be able to select people, but sometimes you don't have choice. You've got to kind of make decisions that are done. I think I mentioned my, my style is, is firm but fair. And, you know, any disciplinary issues that come up, I, I go by the contract. I don't deviate from the contract. I stay in touch with, with councils so that I know what legally the town can do and most importantly, what the town can't do. I'm a progressive disciplinary person.
Do you sound like you're a teacher?
Oh, yeah, but I'm trying to-
That's all, that's all our jargon, firm but fair.
Yeah, well, my wife is a teacher, so you're pretty smart to figure that out. So it's, it's, human resources issues, just to kind of sum it up, you can't put them on the bottom of the pile. It's, it's stuff that needs to be dealt with now and it's timely and it's a, it's an important and critical issue. If you put them aside and you delay decisions when they relate to human resources, they come back at you. So I kind of sense you to kind of look at those things as being a priority.
Talk to us in your career, times that you would have said, hey, people, we've been doing it this way for 100 years, but I see if we did it this way, maybe it would be better for the town and the community, thinking out of the box.
Yeah, so let's, let's just do a quick search of the, the memory banks. So when I was in Webster, pretty big town, they didn't have an assistant town administrator. Everyone wanted the position, but no one wanted to kind of carry the ball and bring the issue forward and, and explain why it was necessary. And it was an initiative. I was, I was temporary and I was an interim person. But giving the town some additional management support and someone that could really focus on human resources was critical. And it was something that I'm, I'm proud that I did when I was there. Other things that you, you kind of look at, I'm trying to think of, I can't, I can't think of anything else at this point. My apologies.
Talk to me a little bit about, you know, the procurement law and your certification. Are you certified? Are you not certified?
So I was certified, but then when I retired, my certification lapsed.
Okay, okay.
But I'm not, I'm, I'm versed with 30B, you know, procurement act. Took all the training courses previously in terms of getting the certification. I understand the construction law, 3039M. I know the architectural section, the designer selection under chapter seven of the general laws. And I know chapter 149, which is building construction. Those were all your major pieces of the procurement act. I'm comfortable with those, and you can always go to the inspector general's office if you need additional assistance.
The daily, the daily lawyer?
Yeah, so yeah, you, you just go to them and you ask them what they, they tell you what you can do and what you can't do. It's sometimes nice to touch base with them and have an understanding of what it is, but I'm completely comfortable with that whole process.
Okay.
Could you just give us an example of one time where you really had to think outside the box and problem solve in a, in a unique way?
Well, I, I guess I would go back to the whole collective bargaining thing that I mentioned to you before. I was working as a 25-hour-a-week interim town administrator who had five contracts to settle. Town meeting, motions and budget and capital plan, and I worked 20 to 25 hours a week. So, so I don't know, you know, how do you uniquely fit those into a 25-hour-a-week schedule? You've got to concentrate on what's really important and what's really critical and then cut off the things that were less important. So, you know, I, I just want to kind of relay that thinking outside the box, I can't really say, well, gee, I did this and this. But you have to kind of understand what's, what's critical and what's important. And I never would have got those contracts settled if I kind of followed their traditional role and, and they got done.
Would you say you're the kind of person who can look at the three selectmen and say, what do you do? And that's not probably the best way to do this particular issue or deal with this particular issue? Are you honest and forthright?
Yeah.
Okay.
Comfortable telling us when we're being stupid? What's that? You're comfortable telling us when we're being stupid?
Yeah, tactfully. I mean, no, no, no one wants to be, no one wants to be embarrassed in a public meeting.
Yeah, right.
And it's never been my style to embarrass people in a public meeting. I want to make sure that we're on the same page before we go into the meeting, that you understand what's in the packet. You understand what the critical issues are associated with the meeting, what the pros and cons of your decisions are, yes vote or no vote. So, so if you, if the board members still want to go in a different direction, I say, as long as it's your town. I'm here, I'm here to keep things going, but it ultimately, you're elected officials and you're elected by the community.
Right.
I can advise you and suggest that you go in a different direction, but ultimately, you can decide what ultimately is best for the community. And, and once you make that decision, we'll go in with it.
Okay, okay. John, you have other questions from the list, or if you have other personal questions that you would like to ask?
Oh, could you just share with us some of the experience you have with regional agreements?
Let's see. We had a, in Webster, we had a regional health official. During the whole COVID pandemic, we wanted to hire a public health nurse. So we entered into an agreement with the neighboring community to, to share those services. We pursued grants to be able, we, I pursued grants to be able to get that done. So that would have been something that we would have done in terms of a regional basis. And also, when I was in Dudley, which Dudley and Webster, if you know the community, they kind of share the main street. So you really, it's like two downtowns that are like right together. We created, we, I created a regional dispatch. So it was, it was a lot of work, but the two towns had independent standalone dispatch centers with dispatch communicators. It was decided that as part of the construction project for a new police station in the town of Webster, we consolidate Dudley and Webster communications issues. And we, there was a board, appointed board by both communities that was put forward. And we, we ultimately were successful in, in getting those departments merged and get a regional agreement. And we're successful in terms of hiring an outstanding communications director and pursuing getting different grants to be able to keep that running. So that program is still going.
Okay. I, I think that one, one conundrum that, that the town of Barry has been grappling with and trying to figure out, how can we make this all happen, is dealing with Charter slash Spectrum, whatever we call it this week. Understanding that they're not a public utility, not that they shouldn't be, but they're not. And thus, we have numbers of homes that still are unserved. And we're having a very difficult time working with them to try to get an agreement to pick up the other, you know, families' homes that, you know, are clamoring.
Yeah.
We have some ARPA money to sort of support that effort. What experience do you have with, your, the towns that you've worked with are probably a little more, they're not as rural as ours perhaps. And, but I mean, we, we have to move on that. And Jessica, you have been, I know, arm wrestling with them, and that's part of the arm wrestling that will be yours to do. Working with Charter slash Spectrum to service another probably 100 houses across, across the, the town. We've gotten 100 and, it'll cost you $400,000 to do it. We've got, no, it'll cost you $600,000 to do, this is from the same guy. It'll cost you $700,000 to do it.
So they want the town to pay that money?
Yes. We have an attorney that's, you know, working with us on that, that charge. But I would say that takes some time and we got to wrap it up.
If I may ask, who's the town council?
The town council that's working with this is Bill William Solomon from-
Well, so our general counsel is-
Oh, I know, actually, I know Bill.
Okay.
He's an expert in cable TV.
Yes, he is. Well, that's why we, we sought out his, his advice. And he's been working, working with that. But I mean, obviously, Jessica's been sort of working and pushing. So I mean, I'm just saying that that is, that is something that we've been working on, right? I mean, at least for 18 months, if not longer. And we just can't seem to get Charter into a situation where they are amenable to even entertaining a reasonable contract or a broadband agreement. And so now we have an attorney, and because they're, you know, they're, they're not a utility. So we can't pressure them into, we can maybe embarrass them, they say, into it. So maybe we're at the, let's embarrass them into it. But I, if there's, if there's, anything that people talk to me about when I go around town is, when are you going to get cable straightened out? When are you going to get, and I understand that. And when, obviously with COVID in our schools, many parents had no access to a hotspot. They're down and sitting in front of the school or in front of the library trying to help kids do their homework. I mean, we just can't let that go.
So I, my thought is, every town struggles with, whether it's Charter or Xfinity, Comcast. Every single town, and I've worked in communities that are represented by Charter. And I work in communities that are represented by Comcast, Xfinity. And you really, other than the name, they all operate the same.
Oh, good.
But my, but my thought is, many people, their job is to say no. You can have the person who says yes.
I know.
And, and whoever, whomever that person is, you need to kind of light a fire under that person and pursue a one-on-one dialogue with that person in terms of what your, our priorities are. I don't want to go in with a list of 25 things. What are the top five things? And out of those top five, what are the most important?
We, we really only have one, one thing.
Yeah, and they have a franchise license with the town?
Yes. And they have, they own all the poles. They have licenses for all the poles. The only time we saw any effort on their part to, to really work with us was when Matrix came in in Petersham and joining town. And we had one whole stretch of, of, of road up there. That Matrix came and said, you know, we'll do those 10 or 12 or whatever houses for, wasn't, I don't know, what it ended, it cost us $90,000 or something. 70, whatever. And all of a sudden, Charter was real interested in talking with us. But once they found out that it was only because they were immediately, okay, adjacent to Petersham, that they would be able to pick up that, that road. And they, they took them a while to get the licenses on the poles and all of that. But at least we got that area of the town serviced.
I guess, I guess I'd want to know who the contact person is for Charter and work through that person. Dudley, which seems like it's a million miles away from me, had Charter also.
Okay.
And we had to negotiate. And sometimes you, you have alliances, friendships with people. I don't know whether those people, they may be there, may have been retired, but you do whatever you can possibly do to put up the pressure on them. And I, I think you're going to find a person in that company who, who is able to say yes to the town's proposals and not continually push them off.
Right.
Say, don't, you know, we're too busy or whatever.
But, because I would say, we really want to take action on this with ARPA funds. I mean, there's a, there's a window. And that is, that is one critical item that I don't think, just because it's an interim job, that we can drop the ball on.
Yeah, so does the, the license agreement doesn't specify, does it specify all the streets that need to have connections or?
Well, we have all that data to them, and we keep saying, where's the agreement? Where's something we can at least look at? And I don't think we've been successful in getting a broadband actual document that we can look at. They just have these arbitrary numbers that, so Bill, Bill Solomon, and you know him?
Yeah.
He's, you know, kind of representing us in a one-on-one, you know?
Oh, he's very capable.
And he was recommended by our, yeah, the, he's not moderate, but he's also our-
He's our cable agent.
Cable, cable guy, so in the town. So anyway, we're, we're trying hard to put some pressure on. But with your experience, I don't want you to think that that is, that is one thing that I think we have as a board priority. We'd like, like to get that done if we can before June 30th.
Understood.
Okay. Questions for us?
What do you expect the, the position to be available, number one? And what hours do you want to see the person here?
Okay. Obviously, Jessica is, her last week is next week. We would love to have a couple of days overlap if we could, you know, for a little catch-up and she could say, pass off things. So we are looking at the best possible scenario to do the job, which is not to say, oh, three or four weeks from now, we'll let you know. No, we're going to let this, the successful candidate know within 24 to 48 hours and work with that person to say, what would be the best way in which to transition? Because we're hiring an expert to give us expert advice, and that's what we expect. That, that would, and if, for example, I could just make up some numbers, but I don't know. You will know after you meet with Jessica and you'll say, I need X to do the job. And we are going to do the same. We have two candidates for the position, and you both are, you know each other, I guess.
Yeah, he's, he's quite gateful.
Yeah, and he said the same about you. So we're very lucky.
You're, you're, you're fortunate to have him. He's got a lot of experience and he's a good, he's a good person.
Yeah. John?
Um, just one more question. Just, I believe you said you were interested in three, typically three days. And, and then what type of availability do you have outside of those days? I mean, you know, as far as, you know, answering calls, questions, things like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a phone, and I'm assuming I'd have a computer.
Yeah.
And I, I don't, one of the questions was, is there any element of the job that would be remote? Or is it all required to be on premises?
No, I think, I think there will always be. You would wish there was none remote because I bother you all the time. But of course, there's, we expect you to do remote work. There's, there's probably, we meet on the first and third Wednesday, Mondays of, of the month. So we'd, obviously, like your attendance at that, we do have a virtual component. And sometimes do, you know, we have a virtual audience. Sometimes we don't, but whatever. But no, I think we would obviously want to have you available when we thought we should. But we want you to tell us when you absolutely have to be available. Because there are times when a board could go off the reservation without good counsel.
Happens.
Well, you know what? I, I know what I don't know. John knows what he doesn't know. We know what we know. But we know what we don't know, and that is of primary importance for the town, to seek the advice of people with expertise. And to ensure that we, the decisions we make are not what Maureen thinks is the best, but after some counsel, we believe are in the best interest of the community.
And is, there is a third member of the board?
There is.
Yeah, just not here this evening?
Just not here this evening, and we're surprised at that. But I don't know, something, he's usually at every meeting. So I don't know if something slowed him up, if he forgot we were gonna have an early start or what, but.
And you have an election coming up too, right?
We do.
So you expect a decision before the election?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, because the election is all the way to April thirteenth, is it third or fourth?
Third.
Third. So we will definitely want to have somebody ready to go and actually functioning with us before that date. You're available pretty much immediately?
Yeah, I think I could be available that, that first Monday in April. I've got a, I'm looking at the calendar, I have a vacation the week of the seventeenth, the week of the Patriots Day. As you mentioned, my wife is a teacher. So my, my opportunity to take vacations is very limited.
I understand that. I can even tell you when you can do them, right?
Exactly. We kind of look at the calendar and say, but, but beyond that, I don't have anything planned. And when would you anticipate that the permanent person would be on board? Is there a, a search that's ongoing right now?
There is not, and we would seek counsel from you as to how best to operate a search. Whether or not, you know, we should take X number of weeks or whatever. You know, obviously, a search for this kind of a position, from my perspective, is very important. We need a really strong person and we need to advertise in the right places. We need to have people like you who have connections that you can say, hey, Barry's not a bad town you should think about.
So, so my experiences with that were a little bit different. In Blackstone, they had done nothing. I came on board and I said, are you gonna hire a permanent town administrator? And they said, yeah, I guess we should. So we, so literally the process started from, from nothing and built from there. And it took them about seven months, six months to find a candidate. And Webster was a little more organized. They actually had a search committee. And the search committee, and what I'm saying, Blackstone had put together an RFP. They hired a consultant to come on board. And the consultant worked with the town to kind of identify what the critical skills of this person would be. In, in Webster, they were a little bit further along. They'd done an RFP. Both of those communities, they brought in an expert, a recruiter to kind of assist them. And that works sometimes and sometimes. The recruiter comes on board and the person doesn't last very long. So it's not a guarantee that you're gonna find a successful person. Whichever way you want to go, and I have good experience in doing both.
Great, great. Okay.
All right.
And so we will be back in touch within the next twenty-four, thirty-six hours. And very nice to meet you.
Yeah, nice to meet you. It was an enjoyable, enjoyable ride.
Okay, enjoy, it was a long one.
I actually went to the, is it the Harding Allen House?
Yeah.
So when I drove into town, I had kind of like a deja vu moment. I'm like, oh, I've been here.
Oh, okay.
Wedding.
Oh, yes, okay.
But not mine. Pleasure to meet you.
Yes, Greg, thanks.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Greg, very much.
Thank you very much. I enjoyed it. Wish you not but the best.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all for being so cooperative and helpful and waiting, sitting and waiting for your turn.
Too bad you didn't, with all these folks there, it's not mad you didn't ask whether there was any questions from the citizens who say.
Sam, there is never a day that I can please you all of the time. I do the best, but.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just telling that that might have been an interesting discussion.
It may have been. We'll never know.
Never know.
Never know. I would suspect however, when we're going to make the big decision for the final, you know, candidate to be our longtime, I hope, town administrator, there will be some public input and opportunity. But right now, we gotta get the guy in the seat to do the job because we cannot be left without that skill set. When that skill set walks out the door, I am very, I am very aware of the weakness that, that we have in this community. So that's why we're moving right along.
That was, that was one of the reasons why at the last meeting, there was some discussion here about finding some funding from the free cash and maybe put aside. And I guess you folks had decided that you were gonna have, continue the discussion this week. And that's the reason I came here, actually.
Well, I don't think we had made any idea about having a discussion about the compensation for the final candidate, which we won't be naming until probably three or four months from now, maybe, maybe five. So I don't think that that's probably an appropriate thing to even, we don't have it on the agenda and we don't expect we're gonna talk about it.
I'm sure John.
Yeah, I, I think that's gonna be an important discussion as we get towards getting a permanent town administrator. Making sure that we, you know, again, create a situation where someone will want to stay and, and continue with this community.
And we'll be doing an exit interview, obviously, with our town administrator and finding out some of her ideas about going forward, what could have changed her decisions. Okay, having, have, having gone through our interviews, we have an opportunity for public comment that Sam has already started. So any other public comment?
I just feel so comfortable.
I know you do.
After forty-five years, I feel that this is kind of my.
Okay.
That's why I didn't really worry about getting too dressed up today. I came right from work.
Well, that's okay. Okay, public comment, anybody? Okay, I think we see none. Moving on to the approval of meeting minutes, which requires a vote. We have March sixth. The minutes from March sixth, I know you've had the opportunity to review those, so I'd look for a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the public meeting on March sixth.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the meeting minutes from March sixth. This will be for public release. Are any questions, comments? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
March sixth, the executive session minutes. Those minutes, while they will be approved tonight, they will not be for release since there is information from an executive session included in those minutes.
I move for the approval without release for the executive session minutes from March sixth.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded for the approval of the executive session meeting minutes from March sixth, not for release. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we have March fifteenth. March fifteenth, another executive session. And those minutes approval, but not for release. Are, are, are we ready to release those?
No.
Doesn't say in the agenda not for release, but I think these are not for release.
These are not for release.
Okay.
I move to approve but not release the executive session minutes from March fifteenth.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the March fifteenth executive session meeting minutes, but not for release. Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving along. Before we get into reports, I believe that the new business, a special town meeting warrant, is of interest to a group of people who have come here early to, I thought, because our meeting started early, but it was for interviews. But anyway, I know that you've been already sitting here for about an hour. So special town meeting warrant, obviously. Jessica, you want to walk us through our requirements?
So today, in order to have a, a special town meeting on April twenty-fifth, the board needs to open the warrant and the warrant needs to be closed and approved for the next meeting, which is April third, to allow the two weeks of posting time that is required. So tonight, I would request that the select board open the special town meeting warrant for April twenty-fifth. And at that time, we can discuss, you know, the, the special town meeting articles, primarily the two-fiftieth committee's request.
Okay, do we have a motion to open the town warrant for the special town meeting that is going to be scheduled for April twenty-fifth? That we, we will be closing that warrant on April third. So obviously, anything that's going to be on that warrant, we have to, you know, have in our, in our hands by the third.
Should we schedule a town meeting for us for that date and then open a warrant for that meeting?
If that is, I think you can do it either way, but why don't we, why don't we do it? The sending, I, we talked about it, I know, at our last meeting. So basically, to authorize the town, a special town meeting effective with the town, this is what the town clerk has recommended be the best date, so that we would have a special town meeting scheduled for April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three. Could I have a motion?
We have a special town meeting April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to authorize the special town meeting for April twenty-five, twenty-twenty-three. Those in favor?
Yes.
Aye. Okay, moving on, then we need to open the warrant for the meeting that has been voted for April twenty-fifth. So the warrant is open until April third. So any warrant that you want on, anything you want on the warrant has to be in our hands.
I would say even by March thirtieth, just so I can have it prepared for the April third meeting. That would be best.
We're gonna open it on the third, which is.
Two weeks from today.
Two weeks from today.
That's Monday. Why don't we just leave it open for a week, close it on the tenth? It's special town, the, the idea of this, once again, is to put the things on we want. I don't want to, I hate to, I said every time we had to do a meeting, I hate to push it off to the nth hour. If something goes wrong or something needs to be re-voted, we need time to have another meeting and make changes. So if we close it on the tenth, that, that gives us plenty of time to, to make changes if we need to and let Jessica prepare it. She can have it prepared for that weekend.
The twenty-seventh.
The twenty-seventh?
The twenty-seventh.
Today's the twentieth.
Today's the twentieth.
So when we can be the twenty-seventh?
If we want to keep it open a week, we have to close the warrant on the twenty-seventh, which is next month, which is a week.
My gosh.
Come on, get with the, get with the.
It's been one of those days, as you can tell.
I could tell.
It's not been a day for me.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I'm going, I'm going a week from the third. Isn't that horrible? So I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let John make the motion, now that we had some, we wanted to leave for a week. And I'll just, you know.
I will move to open the special town meeting warrant for the meeting on April twenty-fifth to be closed on March twenty-seventh.
Okay, so we'll open the warrant tonight and close the warrant on March twenty-seventh.
Could I, could I ask, do we just add a time for that closing?
Five P.M.
Five P.M.
Five P.M.
On March twenty-seventh.
Thank you. I would second that motion.
We have a motion made and seconded to open the warrant for the special town meeting scheduled for the twenty-fifth of April, to open the warrant this evening and to close it on March twenty-seventh by five P.M. Okay, so the, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded and voted. The people who are here to put something on that town meeting warrant, you can do so. But you should do so in writing and you should forward that information to Jessica. I think it's, it's pretty, it's, it's very easy language. If you need help with this, you know, kind of crafting what that looks like, Jessica will help you. Is, you know, it'll say, I, you know, I vote the town raised an appropriated sum of money. Usually you don't put the sum in this close to town meeting, but you can. This, a sum of money to support the activities and events planned by the two-hundred-and-fiftieth, you know, anniversary group and, and so forth. So you can help them with the, the language, so it's appropriate. And the town clerk often will review stuff for us to make sure it's done appropriately and so that we don't have a, any kind of a problem on town meeting floor.
You need not get any signatures. It would be placed on the one by the board as the board's article.
Yes.
Write what you want on it. And we'll discuss that and it'll be on as our articles. You don't have to go get any signatures for it.
Yeah. And also, we have that. And I know that there's another issue that you guys are here for, which is a.
Appointment?
F, this two-hundred-and-fiftieth committee appointment of Amanda Clappam to replace, I think you're looking for an honorary member?
I don't think it's just gonna be honorary. I mean, it's gonna be pretty active.
Doesn't, it doesn't matter because she's not a town resident. It seems that the language for this committee was, that it would be town residents on this committee. And your chair has indicated that it perhaps would be more accurately put together to call it an honorary. Not that she can't do, but I, you know what I mean? She, we can't just kind of, we're not opening up to anybody and everybody. We understand the connection here and why, why it's appropriate.
I would make a motion that we modify this committee to allow for this individual, as she has been a lifetime resident of this town and it is filling her mother's spot. I would ask this board to make the exception and allow the placement of this individual on our committee. It is our committee.
Well, the only concern that I would have with that is to pass it by legal and make sure that it is appropriate for the.
Make sure what our bylaws say about for it.
Yeah.
For any committee.
If, if for some reason we can't have an out-of-town or on-a-committee, sure, for that reason. But as far as other ways, it's our committee.
Well, it may be our committee, but we can't do things with our committee, which is really a town committee, unless it's appropriate. And so I just want to make sure that legally.
Well, it comes, it's not anything in our actual bylaws that say that prohibit us from doing something like this. It comes down to the actual charge of the committee, which is a lot easier to modify than a bylaw.
What was our, what was our original charge?
I would have to look at the charge. There is, I'm assuming, a residency requirement and it's not on our, my town government site. But I think in terms of if we were going to make an amendment, this would be a pretty easy amendment to make. It would just, you know.
So we would be amending the charge.
Our own charge.
Voted by the committee.
Yep.
To authorize this individual to act as, as an, as an official member of this committee.
Yes.
Well, as long as it's legal and we're not putting her in any liability or jeopardy, because that's what I worry about. Understand, when she acts in our behalf, we have to make sure that she is protected. Just like when, if one of you were to get, you know, seriously hurt or get accused of doing something with money, you better hope that we're standing there behind you. And I don't want this woman to not have access to, you know, the full faith and credit of the Barry, John of Barry.
Yes, I did, I, hold on, I found the charge.
What did we vote?
There is nothing that requires residency.
Okay.
I didn't think we did in the charge.
Yeah, it says.
I think the indication by Richard Stevens is that it may be a town policy. But policies, of course, are, you know, we generally follow our policies. But there's exceptions to anything. And this would be a reasonable exception where her mother has passed away, she wants to fill her position and she's been, and went to school here and has lived here, you know, virtually all of her life to this point, until she's recently moved.
So there is, it says, a key element of preparing for the two-fiftieth anniversary, undertake the work associated with planning for the events, appointing residents to serve on the committee and then supporting their efforts. But that's not included in the charge. That was a letter to the select board about this. So the actual charge says, the two-fiftieth anniversary committee shall be comprised of up to nine members serving one-year terms and subject to annual reappointment by the board of selectmen. So in the charge, there is nothing that requires residencies.
As long, as we, as long as this individual is not placed in any, in any situation where an action that she takes is somehow, you know, comes back to hurt her and we're not, and we're not, we're not there with our insurance to protect her.
Nope, no, this.
Then I withdraw my motion to modify our charge and just move the reappoint Amanda to the two-fiftieth committee.
Well, I don't even think you have to modify the charge. I think.
No, I'm saying, withdraw my motion to modify the charge.
Yeah, I, I think we, we can, we'll just.
Make a motion to.
And make sure that she gets an official letter from us with the vote, just so that she keeps it, just in case.
Well, she, she will get a letter that basically says that you need to go to the town clerk and get sworn in. So there is a, there is a letter that all, everybody.
Just as long as we get her official.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, as, as representing us.
And will this bring the board back to the full nine? Or are there other open spots available?
That will bring it back to the full nine.
Okay, so you'll be, okay, you'll be.
Capacity.
Full to the nines.
Full to the nines. We have, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion made and seconded to appoint Amanda Clappam to the two-hundred-and-fiftieth committee for, I think, what is many months to, September of twenty-twenty-four. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, looks like a vote. And just make sure she gets that and make sure she gets sworn in by the town clerk. You're welcome.
Sometimes logic and simplicity can prevail.
Well, I just want to make sure she's protected.
Yeah, I didn't think we were too complicated with the charge.
Yeah.
My only concern is that we're seeing town policy and we're having good reason to go against that policy.
Okay, so moving then to, back to reports. So don't forget to just have that warrant article, put that, work with Jessica and get that together for us. Town report, Jessica?
So in your packet, I have these.
I'm gonna watch Greg. He's gonna have to get out the glasses tonight.
Yeah, we have to get, unfortunately.
I think I have to get out the glasses.
Yeah, unfortunately, it printed so small and I was.
Good night.
Yeah, unfortunately, it printed so small, and I was, thank you. I've, I've been working on this for a while, up until literally right before we came down here, so I didn't have a lot of time to manipulate it, to make it readable, but I will send you guys a digital copy of this as well, it's essentially a, you know, some notes for transition, so in the yellow, I have all of the projects that I'm currently working on, and the description of what those projects include, you know, who the point person is for those projects, if there's any funding related to it, where the funding's coming from, what the amount is, and also an anticipated completion date. So we have on here things like the budget, which I've also linked.
So those at home can follow, I'm just gonna hold it up for you.
Yeah, hey, there's confidential information on there.
I, I'm not worried. I can't read it.
So we have, up on the top, we have the budget, which I've linked all of the necessary spreadsheets that go along with that, so the proposed budget in its current form, which still needs a couple of modifications before I, you know, send it out to everybody, projected revenues that are current as of today, we don't have, we still need to wait for the state to make their final decisions, to know kind of how those numbers will shake out, but for our best guess right now, that's what we have, and then a five-year projection spreadsheet that I'm also currently finishing. Then I have a little bit of information about the special town meeting, when was, when the warrant was open, when it's gonna close, a little bit of information about when the board needs to approve the warrant to meet the two-week posting requirements, and as well as a spreadsheet that is going to include any information that the next town administrator, or interim town administrator, will need to inform, you know, what is going on, the special town meeting warrant, and I've also included some expenses that we appropriated at the annual town meeting that we had to cut, or we underbudgeted for, and I've included what the FY twenty-three expected expenditure will be, just to show that there's gonna be a little bit of a variance in between where, where we are in the budget currently and where we plan to be.
Would you be recommending that at the special town meeting, we make adjustments to our current budget, or leave everything to right before the meeting?
So I would recommend for the most part, unless it's an expenditure that we've already made, and that's not gonna be recurring until the end of the fiscal year, that you leave the current budget the way it is until right before the town meeting, and make adjustments there. What I am gonna recommend for the special town meeting is that you, that you appropriate money to go to the capital purchase ban and the mass munifin, which was the interim treasurer collector work, because those are two purchases that have already been completed for the year, there's not gonna be any kind of recurring expenditure going towards those.
No structural debt.
Right.
Okay.
So, so we should be okay for that.
Okay. And you will have those warrant articles prepared for us, right?
Yes, yeah, so everything will be prepared for you guys for the April third meeting, having it close, having the warrant close on the twenty-seventh will give me plenty of time to make sure all of that language is appropriate and makes sense for the, for the special town meeting.
Okay.
So, moving down the line, I've included the wastewater treatment plant project, you know, again, who the point person is for that, the amount, and this is a general overview, when I am able to meet with the interim person next week, I will be able to go into all of the kind of nitty-gritty that I can't, you can't always fully put into one document, like the little nuanced information. Then moving down, we have the master plan, phase one and two, last week, working with CMRPC, we submitted an expression of interest to the Mass One-Stop Grant for, to fund phase two of the master plan, so the grant that I had, that I received for the first part of the master plan was only enough to cover about half of the work that they're doing, so this effort is to grant fund the second half, and also the timing of the grant should make it kind of seamless, so there's not a big gap in between phase one and phase two. And the community, or the Mass One-Stop Grant has been known to fund master plans in the past, so we're pretty hopeful that it'll come to fruition for Barry as well. Moving down, I have a little bit of information about website improvements, because we all know that there is a need for website improvements, I think, you know, this might be a better goal for, for the permanent town administrator, because I think what we really need is potentially a new platform to host our website on, because this, this platform that we do have is very time-consuming to learn and to make.
It's not intuitive.
It's not intuitive at all, but I do know that there's better vendors out there, and the treasurer collector, Jake, he has also mentioned that he has some experience with a couple of different website platforms that he finds to be a lot more intuitive, so I, I added him as a point person on that to talk to about other options. Moving down the line, we have the community development block grant, there is not too much exciting going on, there's not too much attention that needs to be put towards that, other than on Thursday, I have a meeting with Weston and Sampson, as well as our CMRPC point person, to discuss the infrastructure plan in South Barry, as well as, you know, we also have housing rehab that's in progress. Moving down to cable access and the charter contract renewal, so I've been working with our attorney to kind of massage some information out of cable charter, and our goal was to have more updated information for this meeting, but even with our attorney kind of being our spokesperson person at that point, we still haven't gotten any response from charter, so to say that this has been frustrating is kind of an understatement, I was really hopeful that I was gonna be able to have this, like, as my little parting project, to have this broadband agreement in place, but unfortunately, the charter government relations people just have other plans. And then that leads into the fact that the charter contract renewal expires in September of twenty-twenty-four, but again, we do have attorney Solomon to help us move through the negotiations of that new contract, as well as assisting with this cable build-out project. Moving down, I have included the Henry Woods building sign, we've, we have a quote that we accepted back in twenty-nineteen for the Henry Woods building sign out front of, in front of this building, there's been a lot of back and forth to try and complete this project, and essentially where we left off right before the ground froze was that the contractor needs to fill out the building permit before he can proceed with installation.
But the, but the sign is done?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, everything is done as of.
That's not an electronic, electronic sign, that's just.
That's just, it's like the library.
Like a library sign, okay, thank you.
Yep, as granite posts and a green board, but the electronic sign is something else I included on here, 'cause I know that this was a part of a conversation that we've had, you know, whether it was gonna be put on common, or it was gonna be put down by wholesome market, or, you know, if, if it does go on the common, that there are still some funds available, so again, I've included Paul Kritz's information, 'cause he's the representative for the Berry Common Committee, and if, if we can get that sign on the common, I think that would be a great source of funds for, I know.
I think that's doubtful.
I don't think so, I think that's something we can put on the warrant for town meeting.
Well, I'm just saying that they.
For the town, and see if the town wants it, not just the historic society.
Well, I know, but we have to be amenable to their, their concerns about the historic nature of the community, I suppose.
Well, we do have roads through here when they used to be dirt and horse and buggy and things.
All right, Greg, I'm just trying to say.
The point is, as time goes on, we try to keep up with the times a bit, and I don't think a sign's an unreasonable thing to have, but it can be done tastefully.
Well, it has to be done tastefully, 'cause they're concerned.
For them to say, no, 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 we can't have it, that's.
Well, they want a sign, they just don't want an electronic.
We wanna have an electronic sign, but we wanna find a way to make, make it so everyone's happy with it, and that's what Mr. Princeton had left off with, he'll get back to us with some examples, and he hasn't yet, perhaps someday he will.
Well, the example that he talked about was the one that's in Rutland, and I would say that that was not.
Right, he was gonna get some examples for us and come back, but.
Anyway, moving on.
So, the next two pieces of this report has to do with some small upgrades in this building, so as you may have seen, we have a couple of new picnic tables out front, and that was, those were acquired through a grant, but one of the, one of the issues that we have is that we do need to replace the concrete pad there, so we were working with Monty Tech before, Monty Tech kind of works in, in semesters, and we were working with them last fall to discuss putting, pouring down a concrete pad, because they also have another project that they're working on with the Board of Health for another concrete pad down at the transfer station, so we were gonna try to do a concurrent project for, for the students to do a small concrete pad, and then we also have the elevator door here that the board accepted a contract for back in December to, to do a full replacement of the door and an installation of the handicap button.
And did they have a timeframe for that, are they waiting for spring, or are they?
Well, we were, we were told that we were gonna hear back from them on an installation date this month, so we're still waiting on that, and we will, if I don't hear back from them before I leave, we're gonna reach out and just say.
The challenge of those is getting the doors, when I ordered the one that I did at Groddan, we waited three and a half months for the door, but that was an unusual size, this door should be more typical and common, and it should come in a lot quicker, but.
I think they said at roughly ten weeks.
Wow, so this.
It should be soon.
It should be done for two-hundred-and-fifty.
They told me five to eight, so it was, it was close to the end of four months when it all got done, but.
Well, I'm going to make sure I follow up on that before, so then we have, of course, the contracts, which I can't talk about here, but I've included a little bit of information on where we are with those. The, the next item I have is the solar at the public safety building, so I discussed how we had an original donation, that was supposed to happen, but then the company went bankrupt, and that's the end of that, so.
That's what happened, they didn't have free solar roofs.
I guess, and then, so I do have a draft RFP that can be advertised for carport solar installation, to get a better understanding of what this project's gonna cost before we enter into any contracts, so you know what to appropriate for funds. And so we do have two generators on this list, going back to some capital improvement, we have a generator at Ruggles Lane that needs to be replaced, and we have a generator at the Senior Center that also needs to be replaced.
Well, I don't think, Ruggles Lane never had a generator, so that would be new.
Oh, okay, so it's a new.
And what's wrong with the one at the Senior Center?
Um, to my understanding.
I don't think they have one.
That's what I'm wondering if they don't have one.
They don't have one, because they would usually come to Quabin, the high school.
They last a long time.
Yeah, 'cause they barely, once a week, just to chest them, so I'll bet these are both, these are both new.
Not in a number of places, yeah.
So.
Good places to have generators.
Yeah, for sure.
Right, so, but we appropriated fifty thousand dollars last annual town meeting for a Ruggles Lane generator, but it wasn't enough.
No.
So we have to go, we have to go back, but my recommendation is going to be to get two quotes and bid for these generators at the same time to hopefully get a better price for it. So there, that's that. We also have the Bradford Apartments down in South Barry, which is managed by the Barry Housing Authority, so there are some, some concerns with the conditions of, of that building, and it's gonna be of critical importance that the next town administrator works with the Barry Housing Authority to find some funding opportunities to help offset the costs of repairing this building, and CDVG would be a great round of funding to help out with that, and the next round to apply for is in the fall, so I've already talked to CMRPC about having this be our priority when we apply. Then I mentioned the new fire station, because that is still of critical importance, I did receive a proposal for an appraisal of the building, to see if the parcel is worth purchasing on Broad Street, so I've reached out to the owner's attorney to see if they are interested in going through with that appraisal.
Okay.
And again, that was something that I was hoping that we could have a conversation about today, but I have not heard back from them yet, and so we can't move forward. And then I mentioned some of the work that the two-fiftieth anniversary committee has done, and their request for a hundred thousand dollars for their event, but I am also going to recommend that an additional seven thousand dollars be added to that amount in order to cover the details that it will cost to, you know, to kind of monitor.
You don't think it would be appropriate to make that part of the hundred thousand?
So I think that that's a conversation that we can have, I think it would make sense to keep it as within the one hundred thousand, but I, I know that the two-fiftieth committee, they've requested the one hundred thousand dollars with the assumption that, that we were going to cover the details separately, so, but I.
We can wait till closer to this, to the two-fiftieth, and see also how they do fundraising, 'cause your numbers have to play out, the idea is to get some money to them so that we can make sure we're having a celebration.
Yep.
And then, how much they fundraise will determine how much we really need to pick up in the end, or if they have to cut things, but.
Right, okay, so if you're comfortable with staying at the one hundred thousand, that's fine, but I will definitely communicate that with the committee, that just due to the constraints that we have in the current budget, what I'm looking at cutting is like, something like these one-time expense, right?
Right.
Like the details is a one-time expense, and really not a need to cut seven thousand dollars elsewhere in the budget.
But the thing with it is, this really wouldn't be, the, the details aren't going to be until FY twenty-five, because they're gonna be after July first, pretty much.
Um, no, actually, this, these details were budgeted for FY twenty-four.
Really?
Yes, yeah, 'cause they do have.
What are they gonna be doing for the next year?
They have a couple of events scheduled for FY twenty-four, more in like the.
The dance in the street thing and that kind of thing?
Yeah, but more in the, like, the summer of twenty, or, like, the spring slash summer of twenty-twenty-four before July first.
Right, got it, okay.
So they do have something like on Founder's Day, and a couple of other.
Which is in June.
Events, they do their, their, what's it, Felt and Field, like, they have like a field day, or a fair, fair, that's what they have, so that costs, you know, there's detail costs with that, so I took that out of the operating budget to try and find some areas.
Reasons.
Yep, so underneath that in the red, I've added all of the contracts with links to the actual contracts for reference, just trying to like, bring the resources in one place. So on the purple page, which is, again, I apologize for how small the writing is, but I, I included a handful of projects that I think that the select board should look towards over the next year or two, and also, you know, for the next town administrator as well. So on, on the top, I have a sewer or water weight, water rate study, the, this study would identify the capital needs for the sewer and water departments and guide the town in adjusting the rates accordingly in order to absorb the cost of the capital projects. So this, in the, in the future, this could potentially avoid like a multimillion-dollar USDA loan borrowing, whereas the way that these rate studies are developed is that they, they say, okay, like in twenty-twenty-five, you need the, you know, I'm horrible with these terms, but you need this piece of equipment replaced, here's how you should be adjusting your rates accordingly, in order to kind of build up the enterprise fund in order to
Well, I think, I think from, from the several meetings that we've been at with DPW and Sewer Commission, they indicate, now, I don't know how accurate this is, my recollection that is, that there is sufficient rate, you know, increases that have already taken place to fund that capital project.
That are already approved, taking place and are going to, that are approved.
So I'm, I'm thinking, but.
That would fund the six million dollars.
Yeah, and now it's only 4 million, so.
And then the 4 million will have part back in a grant sum, yeah, so there should be excess funds.
There should be.
That should be building the stabilization on their enterprise account so that they can do these things next time around without.
Any further raises.
For further raises.
I mean, they, they.
Or borrow.
The complaint obviously is that the rates are high relative to other communities and I don't know if that's accurate or not. So any rate study that we would do would be really helpful to have people understand, you know, where, where we are paying versus where other communities are paying.
Yeah.
Right, and for future improvements beyond that, looking forward even beyond that, hopefully not, to not be dependent on what the USDA will grant us.
So, I just, I know that in the, in the, another community that I, I work for, we had a sewer rate study done and it's been incredibly helpful in, in capital planning over a number of years. Because especially the wastewater treatment plant, that is like probably the most expensive piece of infrastructure that you have in the town. And every piece inside that building is super costly. I mean, we talk about a fire truck and we're like, whoa, sticker shock, but when you talk about what goes on in a sewer wastewater treatment plant, it's like way, way more than a fire truck.
I suggested before at meetings, um, years, years ago, and I'm gonna suggest it again. Currently, the town buildings do not pay anything to the water sewer enterprises. And let's just say, to, to, for argument's sake, make it simple.
The schools do, Ruggles, Ruggles Lane does and so the Quabbin does.
Well, that's good.
They play sewer and they play water.
That would be big uses.
Yeah.
But still the other town buildings, the fire stations, the town hall, visitors and everybody, DPW, library, I don't know if they, library does, I don't think they do.
Yes, they do.
They do pay?
Yeah.
Okay, the other town buildings at least don't. So as minimal as, minimal as it is, they should go into the budgets of those buildings because obviously they use 100% of the town in guests and employees and they pay, and they're only paid for by half the residents. So it's wrong to keep putting that burden for all these town buildings, water and sewer, on the half the residents and half the water and sewer. It's not shared by everybody, so it should hit the general fund and be budgeted in and they, I talked about it years ago and they're gonna run some mock bills.
I mean, what we'll be taking, we'll be taking the stress off the actual users. Because sometimes, while I don't have sewer at my, my home, I use town sewers. In town, town water when I'm here or from at one of the schools or whatever, so I think what it does is it takes some of the bite off of the user.
It's not huge, but it, but it is, it is something and no matter how trivial the use is.
But it's in the non-user that we're putting the burden.
Right, it's, it'd be equivalent to having a two-family house.
Yeah.
And having some electric heat in the common hallway running off your tenant instead of your own.
Yes.
As a landlord, you shouldn't do that, you know. We shouldn't be as water users and sewer users paying for the town buildings, they should come out of the budget.
I agree.
You know, they're, well, take it out of the enterprise fund, well, that comes from.
Well, I mean, you know, you just, that's just a budget shift around.
Yeah.
And I think it makes sense.
Right, it's not a huge amount, but it is something, it, you know.
Yeah.
Will allow the enterprise funds to build a little more, I guess, cause money can change the rates for it, but it's, it's to set up in our way that's really inequable to half the residents in town.
So, the next project that I think the board should look into is a, considering a home rule charter. So currently, the town does not have a charter and essentially what a charter is, is a fright from the mass general law is a plan of government. So, this can help the, the town better, one, uh, understand and decide on how they want the government to function. So it really will codify the roles and responsibilities specifically of the town administrator as well as the other departments, boards and commissions. So I think, you know, while my position has a job description, I think there's a lot left up for interpretation. So I think that a home rule charter would kind of give a little bit more clarity and teeth to the roles and responsibilities of the town administrator, I mean, when you think of, it would be different than a strong chief or, or, yeah, the strong chief role. But it could help, definitely help clarify some of the, the roles and responsibilities and strengthen the position as well, which I think would help with retention in the future.
Well, it could clarify the, the, shall we say, the DPW Sewer Commission, Water Commission and that. You know, cause obviously this would be, help, our, our attorneys would help us manage this.
Well, yeah, so this is a legal doc, like a, the town charter, right? So, I mean, you have your set of bylaws, but then you also have, a lot of communities also have a charter. Which is a legal document that kind of helps develop a plan for the governance of the community. But yes, it can also include the, the functions of different commissions. But also with respect to the fact that, like you had mentioned, the DPW Commission is a special legislation, so.
Without any definition though, it's very vague.
Right, so that might be something else that you wanna look into.
To, to put that into, you know, so getting that really clarified would be helpful to all of us, yeah.
Right, so, again, just a, a recommendation for the board to consider. And then we have, you know, Green Communities Grant is something that comes up pretty regularly for me. And so I just wanted to make note for the next town administrator that they, that CMRPC and the Green Communities from the state might reach out about applying for funding for either the municipal or school buildings. I have a little bit of a different take on the, kind of the value that Green Communities can provide to us at this point. They've done some really helpful projects for us in the past, but I think we've got to a point where the goal of Green Communities is to bring a project to be in kind of compliance with new environmental standards. But in a building like the Henry Woods Building where we just like need a new boiler to keep this building warm during the winter, that's not something that Green Communities is gonna help fund, like they, they wanna go.
But that would surprise me because the old, I mean, these HVAC systems in these town buildings are ancient and they're not very efficient. So I would think that that would be something that they would be okay with, no?
They would be good, I mean, so the HVAC that we have in this building is limited to this room in our treasure collector office.
Well, you mean, yeah, having the, the splits, but I mean, having a boiler that actually worked, wouldn't that be novel?
You would think, but they actually don't, cause it's not green enough, right? Like a boiler is not green enough, it's, it still uses oil, so that's been kind of my challenge with that. So moving on, capital improvement plan, the last one was done in 2019. And, uh, so I've included a link to it to say that we didn't, we haven't met all the goals of the capital improvement, improvement plan. Shocker, we went through a pandemic. But we have actually, you know, we've made a lot of progress in some areas and in ways that we originally were planning to use, like free cash, we ended up getting grants for. So, um, I think that pays some homage to the, to the department heads that we have here for kind of working to find alternative funding opportunities. So I've gone through the capital improvement plan, I've kind of crossed out what we've already accomplished. And, um, so the next town administrator will want to, one, reevaluate the costs because the costs associated with the current capital improvement plan are outdated. And then also have discussions with the department heads and potentially look at another capital improvement committee. To, to determine the capital needs for the community. I did do an ARPA survey of the department heads to get a gauge on like what they need for the, their buildings. So I would say that would be a good, like ground level place to start to say, like, this is where the department heads have come in, obviously their needs have far exceeded what we can do with ARPA. But like, this is where we're at and where we might wanna pay attention to for our next capital improvement plan. Which leads me to the next point that discusses ARPA investments. So I do have that request template that I asked the department heads to contribute to. And then I also have a spreadsheet on there that is called the Use of ARPA Funds that details all of the expenditures that we've already made. And when we made those, so, so the new person coming in will have an understanding of where we're at with those. And I also mentioned that the community, when we did a community survey last year, they identified, other than cable access, that a playground is a high priority for ARPA funds. So after things shake out with the, the cable, I would recommend that the board consider, you know, looking at a playground project to satisfy some of the requests from the community. And then I bullet point three different areas of shared services that I think that the town should look into over the next couple of years. Shared fire service is something that's coming up a little bit more immediately with some retirements happening nearby. Police services, I think is like a politically contentious topic and would require a lot of tact to go about it, but I would maybe keep an eye out for either a retirement or a, you know, somebody kind of leaving in another town before having those conversations. And then the last shared service that I've started exploring with the town of Harborsden is the shared assessing services, because I think that's gonna be pretty important over the next couple of years as we look at retention of employees and how hard it is to recruit an assessor. They are literally almost impossible to find.
Do, do you have in, in this thing, I, I, I just say, I haven't seen it, it's, it's very difficult to read. You have put in there, obviously, the search for the town administrator, obviously that's one of our first.
Well, yes, that's gonna be, that, that's an obvious.
We really need to get that off the ground, I would say.
Yes, so, and as the candidates had mentioned, there's kind of two ways that the board can go about this. One is an in-house search, appointing like a search committee and going about it that way. Or two, investing in a search firm. And they will interview the board, go do an evaluation of the community, create a community profile and say, this is what, you know, this is the image of Berry, like what you need for your next town administrator. They have a little bit more of a, a reputation out in, in the community of, as of, they have wonderful networks of, of folks that they can recommend for the position, people just know by name.
Let's say about 10, 12,000 dollars?
I'd say probably about 10,000.
Okay.
And, um, so whether you go with the Colin Center in Mass or Bernie Lynch in Community Paradigm, does these places just have kind of a broader reach if you're, if that's what the board is interested in.
Mass Municipal doesn't have an arm that does this, no? Surprised.
No, I am a little surprised. But they do have, um, they have avenues to help advertise jobs.
Okay.
So, so that's kind of what I have for the immediate ongoing and suggested projects. Yeah, and the, the last sheet that I have are some recently completed projects, which I haven't been putting a whole lot of information in because I've been more focused on like what's.
And we really can't read that. The green one.
Speak for yourself, I can read it just fine.
Did you, did you get it? Oh, you got your magnifier up?
I get the phone this close, like, but it's tough, cause you can only read one little section at a time, try to get across and stay, keep the line steady.
So, so yeah, so it just, this is more for like background. If, if something comes up related to this, these projects, that, you know, whoever's coming in next can say like, oh, you know, this was completed back in like June of 2022 and here's a little bit of details on it. Or here's where I can find some more details. So that one, I haven't been, I haven't put so much effort in, I wanted to make sure that I paid most attention to like what's really pressing. So, that is my.
Well, thank you, I'm sure we're gonna be having lots of little conversations as we wrap up the next week and a half, Jessica.
Yes.
And I would say again, we're very sorry to be going through this wrapping up process, but I'm very happy and so forth for your new opportunity at the state level. It's a very different sort of, shall we say, professional direction and good for you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have any Select Board reports?
Question, can you possibly put that on a file and send it to us when we take it on our tablets?
Yes, I will make sure that you guys have access to it digitally because it also has, like I said, links to spreadsheets, so you guys. So you can read it.
Select Board reports?
Uh, nothing to report, I, I will just say, with regard to something I asked to be put on the agenda last time with, with you giving some information to us about what we can do better. I did request that be taken off just in light of the exit interview. I think whoever does that should just share with the board after what recommendations come out of that.
Okay.
I think that's a more appropriate way to handle it.
Terry, um, anything, Greg? Okay.
No, nothing for this.
And any other correspondence we've received, other than the special appointment for Amanda, which we took care of already? That was one piece of correspondence we had from Richard Stevens.
The other, the other thing that we have that is coming up next on the agenda is the collective bargaining agreement with the Quabbin Regional School District.
Yeah, I can speak to that in detail.
That was really the only other thing that we've.
Well, that's, that's where we are in the agenda anyway, yeah, because we've done a special town meeting. I would just indicate that, I, I know Greg, you are familiar with this, cause I think you served as this representative in the past. The Quabbin Regional School District Collective Bargaining Agreement, it is by law that the five towns have the opportunity to name one select person who might be interested to serve and be involved with some committee members in the, in the collective bargaining agreement approval. Hardwick has said, we're not interested, I guess.
Right.
Last time it was a joke, when I went to the meeting, it was just a meeting to make a vote. They'd already done all the deliberations and all the negotiations and they were just bringing the vote to the, to the school committees. So we had one Select Board voice voting no against all the other committee members that voted yes. And there was, there was no real involvement in the collective bargaining in any way, shape or form.
Well, the thing of it is, I, I, I know that there's responsibility is that there is, for example, some members of the school committee. I'm sorry about that, some members of the school committee are, you know, they're not part of the collective bargaining group. And so when you're sitting there with other committee members walking through the information, they're walking through it with you. And so I don't think it was an effort on their part to push, push a Select Board member aside. Right now, I think.
They had the agreements fully done and agreed upon with the unions and they brought them to vote.
Basically, that's what happens, their, their subcommittee, if the select person had served on the subcommittee, then they would have been in the, on, at the table. But you're not at the table, the whole school committee is not at the table, there's 15 members there, they're not all at the table. There may be two or three at the table, that's it. So I'm just saying that, I don't, you know, it doesn't matter, but this has been.
The, the Select Board members back then, we talked about it, we expected that the Select Board member would be involved in the act of collective bargaining with the group. You know, the school breaking it off to a subgroup to do the collective bargaining, it, it seemed to the boards at the time that that's a way to keep the Select Board out of the part they're allowed to be in, by just letting them vote on it.
There has been for several months now, a, a, a request to the Select Boards to name a representative. We have not here, nor have we named a representative, or have they named a representative in any other town. So, they're trying to wind up their contracts, negotiations sometime in April, and they're saying, if you don't wanna participate, we're good with that, but if you wanna participate, name somebody. But in order to name somebody, we have to have a town, a, a meeting of Select Boards posted and probably virtually, I would say, and somebody says, I'm Susie Jones, I'll do it. And then we have to vote to authorize Susie Jones to do it.
Well, I think the way that we did it in the past was that each Select Board recommended one from their group. So at the last time it was Greg, and then the five members got together from the different boards and they were like, they agreed amongst themselves who was gonna do it.
Well, that's not, the statute's clear.
Okay.
You're, they're supposed to have a meeting and actually, I mean, I don't really care how you get there. But I mean, I'm just saying that the, the statute's clear, that they have the right to have one member of the boards.
Right.
Uh, voted, okay, by, you know, the, the town, each Select Board. And so it's, they have to post the meeting.
Right.
And have a quorum. But, I mean, as Hardwick said, they're not interested, I guess.
Yeah.
And I think there was a gentleman in New Braintree, according to, I think, Mr. McQuestion? I don't know, I don't, I know, I know the name, I can't say I know Mr. McQuestion, that he said, hey, I. that he said, "Hey, I'll do it," and then Barry Hubbardston, OCAM, I guess we just didn't get into it, so if we, if we want...
We got this email from Quabbin less than two weeks ago.
Well, no, because if you look, they also provided the first one they sent to you, which was, which, not to you, but to us months ago.
Oh, uh, 'cause I would say, I only got, the reason why it's on tonight's agenda is because I just got it.
Yeah, well, you, you just got a second one, because they called me and they said, "Did you guys do this?" and I said, "Well, we didn't, we didn't," I said, "We never dealt with it at our end," I said, "So, so you better send us another information," so then they sent something.
Okay.
So, I don't, I don't know what we wanna do, if we wanna just wait and say, you know, if, if Hubbardston, OCAM wanna get on board, um, we just have to have a meeting, virtual, or, you know, it could be very quick and easy.
Yep.
But they're looking for a rep.
Yes.
I'm, I'm thinking, let me just see if they have... But I know, Greg, you did it before, so...
I found it to be a waste of our time.
Okay, well, I mean...
They told us what they did and what they're voting in, we just sit, as a representative, we get to sit there and watch them voting what they've already done, that's all it was.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the, we'd find out that, the next day anyways, when we get the decision released, but there was, there was nothing to do for the select board member, except for listen and take a vote, and that's, but what's happening with, without the select board member there, and, um, the decision's already done, the discussion was already done.
So, you feel personally, you're, you're not interested in...
No interest in this.
Okay, you're not, I, would you like to name...
There's, uh, just a public question through the chair.
Brett, I'm listening to your response, Greg, perhaps if, through you more, if towns felt that their input was respected, and the town of Hardwick...
I don't know why they decided not to participate, so...
Would say, "Oh, I'd love to participate," the town of New Braintree would say, "I'd love to participate," and Greg would say, "I'd love to participate, because we have influence," but if there's no influence, it's a waste of anybody's time, because they're gonna take whatever money they wanna take, and I've learned that for all the years that I've lived here.
Pretty much all went.
Anyway, so, um, we have a responsibility to at least make a decision on this, do we want to, um, indicate that we'll participate in naming a member of one of the select boards? If, John, if you would be interested, you know, you could put your name in?
I don't know that I'd put my name in, but I'd be interested in us, uh, joining into that process of selecting someone.
I have nothing against selecting someone if they wanna go.
Uh, you have a motion?
What would the motion be on this?
Motion would be that we would participate in, um, naming...
I'll make a motion, we participate in the selection process for a, uh, school, a select board representative...
Yeah, collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded, that we, that the town of Barry will participate, and maybe we won't, maybe it won't be one of us, but we, if, you know, another town puts up, we'll vote, um, in naming a collective bargaining, um, fulfilling the...
Representative.
Yeah, representative, that we'll do that. Uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
All right.
So, if you can just follow up with the other towns and see if they wanna do it, and no, and no one here is going to do it, I mean, we're not gonna, we're not gonna vote to say that one of us is gonna do it, we're just saying that we will vote to name somebody else.
Probably suggest a, a virtual meeting time and date, and schedule the meeting, and if they wanna participate, they will, if they don't, at least it's been done in all the towns.
Yeah, and see if Hubbardston, you know, wants to do it, and OCAM, um, I think, 'cause, and New Braintree does, I guess, because they already, they already have a person, and they thought they could just name the person, you have to have the other towns.
As we did, so we're voting on it.
Right. Sorry? I just sent that email to the other towns and we're seeing where it goes. All right.
Okay, um, moving on to a couple appointments for the Master Plan Steering Committee, a gentleman by the name of Richard Whippe, and also naming him, and also naming to that planning board James Caruso.
We have openings for both of those?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, we created those, um, a few weeks ago, we modified the, the positions available, and I believe it was advertised then.
Yep. So, we have a motion, John?
Um, I would abstain on these.
I move we appoint Richard Whippe and James Caruso to the master steering, master plan and steering committee.
Do abstain for a reason of, of you're in opposition?
No, um, I'm on the master plan steering committee.
Okay. You can still vote.
You can still vote, but any...
I'm just, in general, not a fan of committees appointing to themselves.
Every right to abstain, anytime you want.
Okay, so we have a motion made, and I will second that, and, uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, aye.
Abstain.
It looks like a vote. Moving on, um, these public infrastructure representative appointment, um, I would recommend that John Dixon be appointed to serve as the public infrastructure representative. Is that okay to do, John?
That is...
I just assumed that you're the guy who has the credentials to do that.
I will second that, is this a new position, is this something, is this what we talked about last week?
So, this would be to be appointed as the select board's representative to public and private entities with a stake in the public infrastructure of Barry for the purpose of making inquiries on the status of proposed projects and advocating for the interests of the town on behalf of the select board.
Excellent.
I think it's really important to have him...
This, this is what we discussed last week, so it, there's an official...
Representative from our board.
Representative and description of what that position is for.
In other words, you're authorized to do that by the board, you're just not out there as a Lone Ranger. And so, we have, we've had a, a motion, um, to, uh, name John Dixon to that, um, particular position.
Was that my motion or yours?
It was mine.
Then I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded to appoint John Dixon to the select board public infrastructure as representative, effective immediately, after town meeting, being sworn by the clerk if that's necessary, I don't know.
No, it can be effective immediately.
Okay, effective immediately, um, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay, it looks like a vote. Seasonal license renewal for Colebrook RV Resort. If, are all the paperwork in?
Yeah.
Okay. We have all the paperwork?
Paid up, paid up, that's always their biggie, their paid up and stuff.
Okay, so we have all of the, appropriate paperwork has been completed and fees paid. We have a motion for that, please?
I'd move to approve the seasonal alcohol license renewal, the inholder common vic license, and the entertainment and amusement license for Colebrook RV Resort LLC.
I'll second that.
We have a motion made and seconded for the seasonal license renewals for Colebrook RV Resort, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and the appointment of the interim town administrator, okay.
So, I missed all, I missed all the fun.
You just, well, we had, we, I think we had two reasonably good candidates who can definitely do, um, the job for us.
I read through everything at home, I get everything ready, um, yesterday for it, and then...
Greg, this is not your day today.
This is not my day, but, but at least, uh, the negotiations went well, um...
Well, I, I, on these two, um, candidates, um, obviously, once we indicate that one is, you know, gets the nod, and the other one, uh, this would be subject to a background check, where you would call, you know, make certain that, um, these individuals actually did work where they said they were, I know we know that they did, because some of you, you know some of them, right? One of, both of them, I guess, and so on and so forth, and I'll go out on a limb and say that the candidate that I felt would provide us with, um...
Is this typically done in open session or in executive, then we just announce it's an open?
Um, no, it's, it's done in open session.
And then the contract itself would be in executive session?
Yes. I, I was very impressed with both candidates, but more so with Greg Balakounis, I felt that his, um, personality and his, um, definitive way in which he answered the questions, he, I think, would be a really good fit for the, for us. That's just my opinion, subject, of course, to you doing some background checks.
I, um, did go through a scoring process with each of them, and Greg was also my top choice.
Yeah, excellent. I think you'll like him, Greg.
Clearly, I have, I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying enough...
We got another Greg.
I'm not silly enough to try to vote on something I wasn't here for, since you two both have like-minded on it, so we are good on that aspect.
I will entertain a motion to, uh, offer the position of, of the interim administrative assistant to Mr. Greg Balakounis.
I would make that motion.
We have a motion made, and it's been seconded, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Would you please, um, indicate, make, make the call to his, um, references, please, and subject to that, we would go into executive session at, it sounds to me like he's not gonna be really ready to go till around the very beginning of April, which I mean is only a week and a half away, but, um, that would be a, a week with...
We can, we can have a conversation, I don't, I didn't get the vibe that he was gonna be unavailable next week.
Oh, okay, well, I think he, he will be available, but then he's got that vacation...
That vacation, and...
But that's a short week, anyway.
But it's a short week for everybody.
It's a very short week, okay.
That's the advantage of, of getting people that are experienced as administrators, is, is it's not like they really need to get to speed and how everything works, they already understand our position works, and a lot of times, when you're pulling in somebody as, as we've looked at before from, you know, from an auditor position or a treasurer position or some other type of position, it's distinctly different job and task, and at least, that's why we steer to these to begin with, that they understand the job.
Now, as, as far as, um, you need to have a conversation with him about expectations for his compensation, et cetera, and then, obviously, we may have to have another meeting before, um, the third, to talk, to go into executive session for the purposes of putting together contracts.
I am gonna figure out how to properly put events in my phone, because...
Should've just got an iPhone, Greg.
You need alerts, that's all.
I hate iPhones. Suppose I thought I put them in, and maybe someone who knows Androids will show me what I did wrong, I'll call my, I can call my kid, and I'm sure he'll be glad to laugh and tell me what I did wrong.
Well, I always have an, I have alarms in mine.
But I put a bunch of things in there, and they didn't come up.
Alerts.
I had a Digsafe seminar last week, which I had an alert the day before, nothing in the day of, but at least it alerted me, but it didn't tell me what day it was, it just said it was coming up, and I knew it was coming up, but I didn't know the date, and it wasn't in there.
Come on, my watch tells me my whole schedule, come on.
Me too.
Remember...
Just, as soon as you get that information and, and, you know...
You may think I'm kidding, but it was either this or go back to a flip phone.
I don't think they sell them anywhere.
And I, and I was really, 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 really on the fence, if you ever talk to my girlfriend, you ask her, she'll tell you, I was really on the fence over which way is going, back to the Boulder flip and to this.
Well, the fold, the folded flip one is really...
It's a phone and a text, that's it.
Very expensive, uh-huh, okay.
No, 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 the old-fashioned, I was gonna buy a refurbished Boulder phone, go back a generation, they, actually, they sell them now, new ones that are 4G.
Well...
My old one was 3G and it couldn't work, they do make them 4G, but they are flipped, there's limited internet, you can get text and phone calls, that's it.
I'd still forget to bring it.
Yeah.
Okay, so, that being said, um...
I could use it, that's the only...
So, when would be a good meeting day for you all to discuss?
Next week?
Apparently, any day for me, I just, it's not gonna be here.
If we can, if we can do early in, like, a five o'clock meeting, or could you do that, Greg, if we pick a day next week?
I should've done it today, if I remember, but I, I can count the number of meetings I've missed in one hand over the years.
Five thirty, sure.
Yeah, five is, is pushing.
Yes.
You can, you can literally count the number of meetings I've missed.
Okay, so if we do five thirty on, what night next, you wanna do it right before your, your Budget and Finance Committee on Tuesday?
On Tuesday, that'd be great.
Tuesday, five thirty, right before Budget and Finance for her?
Tomorrow or a week from?
Week from.
Okay.
A week from tomorrow.
Yeah, you're gonna give us some information, check out his, his references.
Here we go.
Okay.
Oh, I, I'm not available.
That doesn't work.
All right.
He's not available?
Not avail, uh, John's not available.
John's not available, okay.
I mean, unless you two wanna, will help me, but...
No, that's okay, we'll wait for you.
The date will be in March still?
Yes.
Yeah, are we gonna say...
Next Monday?
Are you gonna say, okay, next Monday works for me, five o'clock?
Five, five thirty.
That'll be, that'll be the twenty-seventh?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's when the, um, that's, and that's when the warrant's closing, so, that's a good time.
I'm assuming when I hit plus, it adds an event. Edit tasks.
Okay, so, five thirty, twenty-seven.
Yes.
Oh, I just wiped it out. So, this would be an event, right? Reminder, task, event.
Oh, it's gonna be an event, Greg.
Okay, let's, uh, can we have a motion to go into executive session, please?
I'm gonna get this one.
I'll make an exec, uh, motion to go into executive session per MGL, uh, chapter thirty A, subsection twenty-one A, part three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation as an open meeting may have detrimental effect to the litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, for federal, multi-district litigation versus CVS, Walgreens, Walmart, Teva, and Allergan.
Second the motion.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you very much, Sam.
Good night.
Good night, um, those in favor?
Dixon, yes.
O'Sullivan, yes.
Marshall, yes.